So at this point, staff would recommend either reducing the number of planning districts or getting rid of them entirely. Policies unique to certain areas that we do need to keep can be incorporated into the new comprehensive plan. And additionally, a new framework could be developed that identifies areas that are really in need of more specific planning efforts. And again, these could be neighborhood centers, corridors, or other areas of the city. We'd also like an updated future land use map, and there's a few reasons for that. Probably the most important reason is we need to make sure that our future land use map is able to accommodate the anticipated growth and housing needs of our population. In addition, another issue that we face with the district plans is that there is inconsistent land use designations and descriptions throughout all of the different plans. There's no consistent naming conventions, and the land use descriptions vary. With an update, we'd like to create a consistent list of land use designations and associated descriptions. We also currently have some plans that have land use designations but no descriptions for what the classification means, so it's not entirely clear what the intended land uses are. This is something that's easy to fix, and it would add clarity and consistency across our plans. And then lastly is an implementation program that identifies specific actions to be pursued to implement the vision of the plan. One of the main implementation items that will likely be in the comprehensive plan update is an update to our zoning code. This was also included as an action item in the city council strategic plan. In terms of next steps, we're going to be finalizing the scope of work and issuing the RFP sometime later this winter or spring of 2024. The contract will come back to city council in the summer for approval of the consultant, and then after council approves the consultant, we would begin work on the update. And we're anticipating the whole process to take between 12 to 18 months, so we're anticipating adoption in winter of '25 or spring of '26. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Anne, I'm curious, as we look to other cities that have gone through this process, does it usually end up being a start over, build from scratch, or an adaptation of the existing comprehensive plan? And then I guess the follow-up to that is, are you guys benchmarking other cities that have gone through this process really effectively or ineffectively?
We're looking at other jurisdictions, especially for their outreach efforts. There's all different ways to approach outreach, and some cities have been really successful and really innovative, so we're looking at cities for outreach. There's, I think, a lot of talk about other comprehensive, recent comprehensive plan updates that have been really, I guess, really moving the needle on housing diversity and looking at ways to incorporate a different variety of housing types in their land use map, so we're looking at that. And I think, what would the rest of your question?
I was curious, you know, if we would expect that this is a start from scratch kind of thing, or let's modify what we have, what's the process look like?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of really great policies in our current comprehensive plan that we'll probably keep and move forward. You know, policies around smart growth and environmental protection. We have policies around housing affordability and diversity. So those are things that I would imagine we would keep and move forward, but there are things that need to be changed. So this process will help us kind of identify what we keep, what needs to be modified.
I have just a very general question relating to the timeline. So adoption of the new comp plan, you're estimating would be in that, like, 18-month timeframe?
Yes.
And then the implementation program would be after that?
Yes.
Okay. So what happens in that kind of interim period where the plan has been adopted, but say the code hasn't been overhauled yet? Can you just kind of, like, if, you know, we're presented with a rezoning and the comp plan has been updated, but the code hasn't been, what might that look like?
Yeah, that's something that we would like our new future land use map and our future land use map designations to give some indication of what zoning districts are compatible with different land use categories. So what we could do in the interim is identify which of our current zoning designations align with these new designations, and that would help kind of move implementation forward in the interim until we get a new zoning code.
So kind of have the, like, what we have now and what we expect, and which ones relate to each other best?
Yeah, and we'll probably need to update that then, once we get a new code, to show which districts, which zoning, or which land use classifications align with the new zones, once we get those new zones. But I also think, you know, I tried to stress in the presentation that our future land use map is conceptual, it's a vision. We don't want to, like, tie ourselves to only certain zoning designations, so we'll have to make sure that there's some flexibility in there as well.
Well, I really like what you said about getting, like, naming conventions consistent and making sure descriptions are there and are consistent. A very specific question, very interested in the regional housing needs assessment component, is that, is that just something we know we need to do, or is that something that, you know, we're going to be working with other jurisdictions on, or we're going to carry the weight of that? Do you have that scoped yet?
Yeah, we, it's something also that we included in the pro-housing grant application. So if we get that grant, we should have some resources to help with that assessment. And we would like to work with other jurisdictions. We'll probably be doing most of the analysis, but we'd like to share that, at the very least, with the other jurisdictions when we have it.
Yeah, that sounds like a really valuable tool, and so I'm all in favor of us taking the lead on that, if that's what it takes, but that's great. Thank you.
Ongoing joint entities topic.
Yes.
I also have two questions. One is, if I'm remembering right from the slides, the last comp plan was adopted in 2013, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So is there kind of a timeline or a timeline extension of, what's the scope or the length, duration of how long you see this updated one? You know, it's 18 months that we'll adopt it, but as it's being built and forecasted, how far out is it sort of slated to be?
Yeah, 15 to 20 years, maybe?
Relevant, I guess.
Yeah.
Sure. You know, that makes, okay, that helps. The other thing, and maybe this is too in the weeds or not, you mentioned at one point in talking about all the different district plans, about the possibility of reducing them or getting rid of them altogether and just having it all be within the comp plan itself, and where there's particularities, those would be called out. Does your department staff have an initial sense of where you would like to see that, or is that, again, something that you would work in consultation with the expert, the consult, or feedback or what have you? I just wondered if there are early indications, or if this is something that actually that is, that you get to own that and say, yeah, we really do want to consolidate this, and if so, why? So, like I say, I don't know if I'm putting the cart before the horse with that question.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to talk to the community about this, too, because I think there are residents who, you know, put a lot of effort in creating those district plans. I want to give some assurances that if we give, get rid of the district plans, which I think is kind of the where staff is leaning, because they just, we can't maintain them. And if we have, if we have district plans for the entire city, that's great, but if we can't update them, then that's not great. So I think we're leaning towards getting rid of them, incorporating the things that need to be incorporated, and then that will allow us to really spend additional planning time on areas of the city where we do need more focused planning efforts, like riverfront crossings was an example of that. There are other areas like that that are out there that need to be identified, and we can focus our efforts there.
Okay, thanks.
Just a quick follow-up on that. I think there's maybe an opportunity, especially with the robust outreach and engagement. I know we've had confusion about what the planning districts are versus, like, neighborhoods and the neighborhood association context, and so I think particularly in the South District, there's a lot of overlap. You know, that South District plan kind of came through, and then the branding around the South District neighborhood and all of that was very much integrated in that district planning process. So I think just using that opportunity to clarify kind of what the neighborhoods are and what the neighborhood associations do, so that when people come before us, I remember we had someone from the public say, "I don't even know what district I'm in," and it's like, well, it doesn't really matter, but thank you for caring.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm curious to know what the engagement outreach piece, planning and zoning commissioners, is there any opportunity to kind of, or any plans to get them in this conversation?
We're actually going to present the same presentation to them tomorrow night.
Oh, great.
So they'll be up to speed after that meeting. And then I think as part of that engagement plan, part of it is figuring out how to keep the commission and council informed as we move forward in the process.
Great. I do love the idea of the overhaul, in a way, and interested just to see what other cities are doing and how they're, because we can learn from others, I think, along the process. And I came on council in 2018, and one of the biggest things that I consistently, I guess, hear from the community or from various different people is everybody on the same page through documents. And I think you stated that our, you know, some of our values aren't really shown in here a little bit, and so this would just be doing that overhaul to make sure that all of that is a part of this document to help guide all parties involved. Now, I think the flexibility part will be a little tricky, so maybe focusing on other cities to see if there are some learned lessons from that.
Okay.
But I think this is a great opportunity.
My question would be, like, if we, as you said, the timeline is right there, and we, this is have to be adopted by 2025, and this has been adopted first on the 2013?
2013, yeah.
And now we open it again, so to amend it, or like, is this because the staff find out that it, like, some area, as you said, there is a gray area on the city that it have to be, is old or is not relevant anymore? Is, I don't know how to phrase my question, but I mean, like, can we, down the road, can we always open this, like, sometime, an amendment? Do amendment to it, or this is have to be 13 years, just because now since 2013 and now it's 10-year?
Yeah.
Is this, like, really every 10-year, or we can amend it as needed?
We can definitely amend it as needed. I mean, it should be a living document that changes as, you know, our city changes. The, I think the overhauls, as the mayor has referred to it, as, those don't happen as frequently. It doesn't have to happen every 10 years, but that's not something that's going to happen every year, every five years, because it's a lot of resources and time. But there can be tweaks and amendments after it's adopted.
Yeah, and is that also going to take this in processing time, or?
No, it wouldn't. I think it probably depends on the type of amendment that's being looked at. I mean, tonight on your city council agenda, you have a comprehensive plan amendment on the agenda to change the future land use map, so those changes come up every now and then. We had a recent amendment, I think in 2018, that changed the annexation policy to incorporate affordable units as part of annexation, so things like that, policy changes, could be a smaller amendment to the comp plan that could come, that could come up and be evaluated and go through the process, but it's not going to take 18 months.
Sure, yeah, that's what I, my question was, thank you.
And if I could add a little, I would, I would say that our comp plan hand zoning code is probably far more complex than most cities, certainly, certainly pure communities in Iowa, but broaden that a little bit. And that was, that's done with the best of intentions, right? These district plans were to, designed to give some more clarity and ownership to those neighborhoods, but as, but as Anne mentioned, unfortunately, they can have the, they can have the opposite effect, too. They can create confusion and introduce complexity into processes that leave all sides frustrated, whether you're on the development side or the neighborhood side. So there's a balance there that has to be struck, and I think from our standpoint, the comp plan, taking a step back, making it a little bit more general, a little bit more flexible, and being very clear and focused. What are those, what are those core values and ideals that we want to see in how our land use is, how our land has developed? Be very clear about that. And as Anne mentioned, it should be pretty consistent throughout all planning districts, right? All those values should carry forward through all. There may be some site-specific or location-specific things that need to be accounted for, but I don't think it needs to be accounted for in 10 different district plans. And then when you get to the zoning code, I think we'll have that, that same discussion, and there is a trade-off. How detailed does that need to be versus what's that streamlined approval process look like? How much faith are you putting in your comp plan and your zoning code to deliver the outcomes that you expect versus how many of those need to come into these chambers and be before you? That's, those are big, big questions that will be tackled in the next few years.
This might be a little too in the weeds, and I think it's a question for our city attorney, that distinction between the legislative framework of the comprehensive plan, which is not a regulatory document, and when we amend it, you know, it is in this kind of legislative function versus the quasi-judicial or judicial function of a specific rezoning. In the complexity of our current plan, it seems like it might put us in more jeopardy as far as people interpreting those complexities and specificities as, you know, getting too close to being regulatory. Is there some value in kind of generalizing things from that point of view?
Yes, I mean, you've articulated a vulnerability in our current system, that is the complexity that comes with our system. For example, when we suffered a lawsuit for the Chauncey across the street here, a lot of the bases for the causes of action were the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan says this, and because you didn't do what we perceive to be that, we think you're acting in an arbitrary and capricious fashion. So yes, I would agree with what you're saying.
Opticos came and did a presentation many, many years ago, and that's when we were doing the form-based code for the South District. So I guess one of my, one of my biggest walkaways from that was congruency in what people thought, like, the staff, or understanding, the congruency and the understanding of what could be done. So that would be for the staff, for planning and zoning, for community members, for our neighborhood associations, and for council. How does, and maybe this is, you know, cart before the horse or something like that, but is there a way to, I mean, are you all planning to make sure that there is great understanding and not left up to interpretation?
With the new goals and policies and?
Yes.
You know, I think, I feel like there's always going to be some level of interpretation, especially if we want it to be flexible. I think one thing that we've talked about with our new land use designations is focusing more on, less on land use and more on form, and thinking about what we want the built environment to look like, and not, do we want it to be single-family or duplex? So one thing that we'll be exploring is kind of mass and scale that's associated with the land use designations, as opposed to, right now, it's single-family duplex, two to eight dwelling units per acre. That doesn't really tell you much about what could be developed in that, in that area. So with, with, with those types of land use categories, there maybe could be, it'd still be flexible, but there may be more certainty in terms of the end results, in terms of the built environment.
And I guess, you know, the walkaway that I would like for you all to have is, the more everybody understands, I guess, the maximum, then the better.
Okay.
That was one thing, you know, Opticos kind of said, this is the max that you can do, and then you go under that. You go up to it or under, and I don't know what all that means, you know, from all the language here, but I found that to be very helpful in concept.
Mm-hmm, thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, all right. We are going to move on to item number two, classification of agenda items.
Counsel, I wanted to point out a couple of matters. Those are matters 6A and 6B, accepting work from the Sycamore Woods and Riverfront West projects. Because of extremely cold weather and a number of other considerations, that work has not been able to be completed yet, and so Public Works staff has asked that we defer that indefinitely, so I'll be making that request at the formal council meeting.
So actually, what that'll look like is we would ask for a separate consideration, and then we'll have to ask for a deferment?
Right, because those items appear in the consent calendar, they'll need to be pulled out first, and then a motion to defer indefinitely for those two items after presumably approval of the remainder of the consent agenda.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Anything else? I will note that on items 8A and 8B, Counselor Moaz will recruise himself from those items. All right, we'll move on, if anything else? We'll move on to item number three, is our information packet discussion. We'll start with January 4th, and in there, there is IP2. We have our joint entity meeting agenda items, so I don't know if there is an item that we wanted to elevate before the council for consideration.
Mayor, I'll just address the correspondence that I directed to you and our city manager yesterday or today. So we have today, we have on our work session topics list, the talking about alternative crisis response, and Jeff had mentioned maybe we want to bring that to joint entities. I think it might be helpful for us to do some of that preliminary discussion here, just knowing how open-ended and non, I was going to say non-functional, the joint entities meetings can be, but certainly maybe letting other entities know, like, and I can, I would take responsibility of saying, like, we could let some other electeds and that kind of thing know that this would be something we'd be talking about with the idea that if it were the kind of thing we would be looking at implementing at all, you know, that would probably be like a regional kind of solution or a countywide kind of solution. So just to address that, you know, just feels like things go to joint entities to die sometimes, so.
That's not why I suggested that.
I know, I know, I didn't mean that.
Understood.
Is there any value in having maybe an update on the 988 for the joint entities, and as more of a reminder that the messaging probably could be increased? Are people open to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So to clarify, we would be asking community, if they're available, to present to that, correct?
Yes.
Staff, yeah, okay.
Any other hot topics? Kind of the beginning of the year, right? Yes, all right. If there is nothing else on IP2, then we'll move on, we'll continue with January 4th information packet. Any other items?
I guess, I don't know, maybe I did not see the tentative meeting schedule?
Yep, if you go down, oh, no, no. Oh, yes, that's the dates for tentative meetings, correct?
Yeah. I saw the day, I saw this tomorrow, it going to be the full day, the day after our meeting, but this is Saturday?
So we have a meeting on this Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a meeting on Saturday, and then we have a meeting next Wednesday. I'm not looking at the calendar, but I believe we have.
I think for this Saturday, I don't know, I really have my, we have a meeting scheduled for three months ago for my job.
Got it.
On Saturday from nine to, to three, and people coming from Des Moines to train us. For, you know, I cannot, I think, I don't know if we can change it from Saturday.
What I might suggest, we have had counselors not available on a, on a major day like that in the past.
Major day for me, I want to be available.
Yeah, it is a major day. I would agree.
And if you can, the schedule will be great, so you can, because that's, like, really, the meeting being scheduled for three months ago.
I'm not exactly sure if people have, I guess that's the question, do people have flexibility? I do think it's a timing thing, so we would need to find a date between now and next Wednesday between the CIP meeting. Yes.
I would personally also be in favor of, of rescheduling, we're talking about the 20th meeting, correct?
Correct, this Saturday.
Yeah, so I, if people in the room aren't aware, I was, I tested positive for COVID-19 yesterday, so I'm going to be in isolation until the 21st. So if we could possibly do something within people's schedules between the 22nd and 23rd, I would be very open to that. I'm available those times as well, but of course, it's up to the, up to the body.
It's, Jeff, what is, I mean, it's also a lot of staff time that we would need to be asking to, not just us, to reschedule? How many people does this impact outside of the seven of us?
You know, there'll be a core of four of staff with you the entire day, and then there'll probably be about 10 or 11 staff coming in and out to present their individual We could pick another day, I just don't know, I couldn't tell you who's available, who's not, we'd make it work.
What, I just, what are our timing constraints? I know we've got certain deadlines we have to meet for different parts of the process due to legal obligations for such, so what flexibility, if any, do we have?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the calendar in, in front of me. I think you'd want to get, you wouldn't want to go more than a week or two before you start running into a really tight timeframe for, for approval. I think you, you more or less have the month of February, I believe, to make changes to your operating budget. The CIP, we really need to have locked in by your February 6th meeting so that we can start our bonding processes. But, yeah, the longer you push that 20th out, it's just, the backend of the approval doesn't change, right? So you're just shrinking your review time, and it's whatever you're comfortable with. But I certainly would start to get nervous if you move into February too far.
Could we, could we record the whole day and provide that to the counselors?
I think it's not like you being here and you ask question immediately and you understand things, no. I just prefer to be booked to another day. I don't know, I have in my schedule tomorrow, and I, you like from it, and I don't know why. Somebody said, like, next day from our meeting will be a long day meeting, and I just put it on the.
What about the 27th?
Any day, I will make it work.
I can't do the 27th.
I can't do the 23rd or 24th. I also, I've got work with people coming in from out of state, so it's a seminar.
Yeah, I work on the 23rd.
How many hours is it that, Jeff?
The Saturday meeting? We would probably, it's usually about seven hours, I think, on average.
Ultimately, for me, I can, I can do whatever, like, any of the dates that have Ultimately, for me, I can, I can do whatever, like, any of the dates that have been provided, the twenty-seventh, the twenty-second, twenty-third, even the twenty-first. I'll just need to have a Zoom component.
I guess the question was just asked if we can do Sunday, the January twenty-first? I know Counselor Don, I'm assuming that you would have to attend by Zoom.
Actually, if I just did the math, that would be the first day that I could attend in person.
What about the twenty-sixth?
I could do the twenty-sixth personally.
I just, I meant everybody. I know. I mean, during the work week is difficult for those of us in a full-time.
Yeah.
What about the twenty-third in the evening? Four P M. to ten P M.?
Or can I do like two, two days, the seven hour in two days instead?
Well, this is the only time of year that I've got people coming in from out of state for two days. For work. Sorry, just to be clear.
Yeah.
And let me just make sure I heard. So the twenty-first is a, next, this Sunday, the twenty-first is a no-go?
I can't, this Sunday.
Okay. All right.
Twenty-second?
And then the twenty-second, the Monday, and Tuesday, the twenty-third is a no-go?
No, I can, I can do the, it's the twenty-third, twenty-fourth that I cannot do.
Monday, the twenty-second, you can do.
Figure out a way to make it work.
I can make that work. Just have to move some things.
I can have some work meetings that if I miss, it's not going to break my heart. I can make them, I can make Monday, the twenty-second work.
Same here.
We'll have to reschedule a meeting. Yeah, I can make that work as well. And we'll figure out staff?
We'll figure out staff.
Okay.
Starting at eight A M.? Yeah?
Yes. All right. I want to make sure.
That is also the same day as joint entities.
So we, yeah, we'd need to be done at four?
If we started, if we started eight, we should be all right. Yeah.
We should be okay. I'll knock off a few slides of my presentation.
Okay.
We'll be meeting again then on Wednesday.
Correct.
That'll stay the same? Wednesday, the twenty-fourth at two, two o'clock?
For the CIP?
Yes, two P M.
CIP is, yeah, yeah, two.
Twenty-fourth at two P M.
Twenty-fourth, yeah. Hopefully, from a staff perspective, it's less painful in the Saturday.
Oh, I'm sure there'll be folks, yes, I'm sure it'll be appreciated.
Put a smile on the cloud.
Thank you so much, everyone, and I hope the staff will figure it out. Thanks.
We will, we will do just fine.
Thanks. Thanks.
All right. Any other items from January fourth? Here are none. We're gonna go on to January eleventh. Here are none. We're gonna move on to item number four, which is University of Iowa Student Government Updates. Welcome back.
All right. Hey, Counsel, I'm back. It's great to be back. I've been in Iowa City the majority of break, and it's good to see the new Council. Yeah, I had a good holiday season, and I hope you all are well. The only new update I have personally is that I was recently hired at the Carver College of Medicine for the Office of Statewide Medical Education Programs, so that's been kind of fun. I'm getting into that. I just started on the third, but on that, I'll turn it over to Noah.
Awesome. Hi, Counsel. So today was our first, was the official start of classes for this spring twenty twenty, yeah, spring twenty twenty-four. Holy crap. All of our classes, though, were put online. I believe all Big Three universities were due to the cold weather. Doesn't mean I still have to go to work, though, for the university. This also applies to Student Government Senate, so we are not meeting tonight. We were supposed to meet tonight. But on a positive note, hopefully, within these next weeks, student government ramps back up. We'll be having more things going on. From our side, we're gonna start kicking out the Narcan campaign more again with Iowa City Downtown District coming back. That kind of took a little bit of a side for a bit, but we got town hall's date figured out, so that's good. And we'll be getting you with more details as soon as Exec gets back to us.
I'm sorry, can you remind us of when that is? I know I wrote it down, but.
I believe February fifteenth.
That sounds right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think. Jeff can correct me. That was.
That is correct. Seven o'clock on the fifteen.
Awesome. And that'll be hopefully, if everything goes to plan, it'll be in the old, old Capitol Senate Chambers where it was last year as well. Some cool initiatives going on right now for student government is that we are currently distributing Birdie and Nightcaps to students across campus. A Birdie is like a little device you can pull, and it makes a really loud noise. It scares off anyone who's, feels threatening or anything like that. And a Nightcap is like a little, like, scrungy thing that goes over a drink, and you can put a straw in. So it helps with less drugging issues. Another great one we have currently is the Airport Shuttle from the Cedar Rapids Airport. A lot of students' flights got delayed and stuff with the weather, so hopefully that helps alleviate some struggles there. And a really cool one we still have is our free textbook drive. Basically, students can turn in textbooks, and then they can come and basically just check it out by giving their student I D. number, and then they can literally own it forever for free, which really helps when some textbooks are like five thousand dollars. Yeah, but that's all we really have. Nothing too crazy. So thank you guys.
Great. Thank you all. We're on to item number five, which is Council Updates on Assigned Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
UNESCO had its first meeting, so I get to get right into one of the new things. We'll be looking at, amongst some other things, starting its own strategic plan process. So they're currently looking to, looking for a facilitator for that, so.
Here are nothing else. We're gonna adjourn our work session, and we'll be back at six P M. for our formal agenda.
It seems like something else come with it. What's that? I, I was like, what? Yeah, because like, how, like, I'm not like, maybe they think I, I, I have office here or something like that. Yeah, I was like. Yeah, which is causing sometime more than ten dollar. And I cannot accept, and I cannot accept that, right, as a, like, yeah. I, I'm glad you guys, okay, that's good. That's good, yeah. Okay.
I'm leaving tomorrow. Is that cherry? I thought it was tea. And it lost a bunch of arms, so it's a topless, armless, misshapen, giant old pine tree. I got my heart cut down because it's like, it's this big. It's been there for a hundred and some years for sure, so.
If you do, you should definitely count the rings.
Yeah, make a piece of furniture out of it or something. I don't know.
I mean, you know.
Cool, I do that or just.
Or just like having give you like something like a tailpipe or just a slab.
I have a bowl made out of a childhood tree from my parents, and it's like they would just maple tree and diet, and they, they actually chopped it up and had a little bit for me. Yeah, that's. Why did they make us we eat that?
Shell Silver tea.
You do a lot of drugs. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You ever heard that song of his about getting stoned?
I drink it without sugar now, but when I drink it, but when I started, I needed sugar and cream.
I came across it years ago.
Sugar bowl.
You know, I grew up.
Oh, yeah, I did too. And I, I remember pulling out the books, the Sidewalk Ends and Light the Attic. I was kind of surprised at how. Did I not get it, or my sensibilities changed?
I got stoned and I missed my Shell Silver.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So that's where that sidewalk ended.
Love it. Love it.
Yeah, just, it was, yeah, but you think, oh, childhood poetry, children's book, and it's like, it's this whole thing I'm not doing. Just, uh, stone to the Jesus.
Yeah. Love it. What about you? What's going on?
Uh, you know, it was actually pretty important. I didn't have to go anywhere either, so it was just a.
Hunker down, stay warm.
Hunker down, stay warm. My son and I got several, you know, rounds of snow removal. And so he's big enough now.
I was gonna say, you, you have help.
I have help, and, you know, the big thing was getting to run the snow blower.
Okay. Do you get a gas one, or you?
Yeah, I got a gas. Probably the last one. I brought one, I had a new one here about two years ago, and they didn't have a. Didn't have an electric available at the time when I needed to get going.
We got an electric one, or a battery one, and we love it.
It's, it's, it's one of those things, like, even like, buy a new car too, a couple of years ago. And it's like, that's probably the last gasoline vehicle I buy, right?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't done a fully loaded car because we traveled, we're a lot.
Right, right.
I went to go visit my parents, I couldn't come home the same day. There's no place to charge up.
Yeah, or even like.
Follow the rules. Yeah, that's pretty funny.
But you know, I mean, then again, the last minivan, um, last decade, got almost two hundred thousand miles out of it, so.
My brother, who has four kids, has a minivan that, he's very proud of it.
I'm reaching.
He is at three hundred fifty thousand miles. Amazing. What kind?
It's a Honda Odyssey.
Yep, that's my Honda.
It just keeps going, and he won't get rid of it now because he's so proud of it. My, my, in the Odyssey, it was kind of, it's over ten years old, it was two thousand, it's gonna need some transmission work. And I'm like, you know, it's kind of at the stage where it's, I didn't want to get nickled and dimes. So it's time to, time to get a new one, which was nice because I really wanted a backup camera. Because the one I had was, it didn't have any of that stuff. So I'm like, yeah, it's a safe, the safety things are really nice now.
I'm gonna miss that. Not gonna miss that.
Well, yeah, no, it's, it's been a good, it's been a good, good bike. I just got new tires for, this is the first set of new tires since I bought it. It's like sixty thousand miles now. So, but that was good grand.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just, I can remember my first car in high school, back in the nineteen hundreds, and I could buy like a new set of tires, and it was thirty-five dollars.
Of cold air? Yeah, there does. Uh-huh.
What, what was your first?
Uh-huh.
It was a Pontiac Sky, Skylar. Skylar, alright. It was a two-door, full leather seats, and it was a manual.
I had a Pontiac Grand Am that I bought from a hail of a sale. So it had been out on a, on a, on a used car lot, and it got pounded by a hail. It was dimpled and mud. A perfect first car, perfect first car, right? I loved it. I didn't care. I immediately got an accident. It wasn't my fault, but somebody ran right into me and had. I got the insurance, and I paid for the car. I was like, this insurance thing is awesome, like.
That's a good deal. My wife actually had the option.
You don't believe them?
She had a car that she had had, it was like.
They probably did.
Geo metros or something like that. And she, and she was. At her place.
Where does all the cold air come from?
A gentleman in a great big old, like, monster Detroit, rolling.
Okay, that is our next meeting then.
With a brake pedal and just demolished it, just like ran over it, basically parked on top of it.
Like a monster truck style, yeah.
And it was, and like, she didn't get enough to replace the vehicle. Which was kind of like, just shit insurance, but I'm like, it was like, oh, we're just giving you the value. Of like replacement. It's like, ah, I think she got screwed.
Switch, switch to a pleasant topic. You've been getting plenty of emails.
Yeah, me too.
How are you choosing which ones to respond to, or not?
I generally try and respond to almost every email I get, unless it's something that is completely, you know, well, unless it's like a spam. If it's beyond the pale, I can show you, just kind of like, just curious picking, like, I started to respond to some, and some I just thought, you're just angry. Like, nothing I'm gonna say is gonna make you less angry. Right, right. Well, and that's part of it. So that's something, I guess, everybody has to sort of decide on their own. Yeah, that's good.
I took like a week.
And now you're responding?
No, no, and I responded fastly, um, but I took a week.
Have you been to meetings?
If I get it, I will pass it along. I have not. I was like, I haven't, but I will definitely keep an eye out. Because it's.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I kind of.
I did that, and, and, yeah, I responded, and I said, I also, I understand. No, nope, nope, nope. Always agree.
Probably heard.
Sure, I hear that there's some minimum. You know? That's my impression. I will definitely keep an eye out. Yep.
Well, I'm, yeah, I was starting to pick and choose, and I think, I don't know if that's right or not, like, people who I thought maybe were listening. But maybe that's not the right strategy either. I want.
I think. For some that I was like, I don't like to, but at one time, once I got sort of, this is my response. I don't personally, I tried to say, basically, everything that I do. What covers the. In, in cases, I did. I do.
Somebody talked about that.
There's a number of, yeah.
Democrats who would desperately to boil something.
Yeah. Yeah.
What's her face tied Trump in Johnson County? I'm sorry, I'm thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I used, I used to do that, but you only know yourself.
The wrong kind of mail. I still, actually got a couple of texts Monday from Ron DeSantis asking.
Oh, your name is on some list?
I'm like, somebody is paying money for this and they're not getting a good deal because this is like, like, it's just like, that should have been like.
Somebody who knows his joke is screwing with you.
Oh, that could be, I hadn't thought of that.
But I did think it was funny, I was like, okay, let's like level out those like, my god, what does this mean? And it's like.
It means that a very small number of people showed up.
So few people, so few people showed up. Almost half of them actually went another route.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, who knows? I don't know the psyche of people enough, but do you think that any of those people who voted for not Trump, they voted for the other person or just? Yeah, that's, I don't know, but that's a good question, curious. Well. Shape up to be a prisoner? I don't know, I'm gonna vote for the guy in prison or the guy who's. I uh. I'm just gonna need to drink heavily this next year. It's gonna be a rough year. But these guys don't wanna be in trouble.
You don't watch live TV, do you? Like, like TV that has commercials where you like have to watch like political advertisements?
Oh, I, uh, very, very rarely.
Okay, I always am shocked when I go to a home that has like a real TV with like TV commercials, starting now all the way and so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
When we were watching the, the NFL games.
That's terrible, terrible. Oh, sure.
They were, and it was just like, oh, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Every ad, every ad.
Back to another channel.
Yeah. Yeah, no, so, yeah, yeah, that's pretty much it unless it's like a, a, you know, we're watching a game or something, I almost.
Yeah.
If I watch anything, it's streaming, like I don't watch any like network TV, my schedule's too erratic anyway and.
Yeah. Well, I don't think most people are watching network television, but like I go to see my parents and like they got normal television on and it's running and I'm like.
And that's what's important, and they vote. Our, our parents' generation votes.
No, my parents are the only Democrats in Tyler County, like literally the only ones.
Got a blessing. But I mean, that's why, right? That's what TV is, oil, they're advertising TV and stuff and that's. Um, you know, that's just one of those things that, you know, we're kind of lucky here in Johnson County, like Cedar Rapids has a TV station, but that's a mixed blessing.
Hmm.
Because politicians in Cedar Rapids buy TV ads.
Yeah, that's true.
Those are allies, by the way.
Sure, yes, Cedar Rapids, uh, city council seats are, are very expensive.
Yeah, and, and those are expensive, check out the last, they spent in the last mayoral race like that.
How bad is it?
Over a million.
Million?
Well, they did a runoff too.
No way.
For what seat?
On the mayoral.
A mayoral race?
Look at the total spending in the last Cedar Rapids mayoral, I, I'm, okay, so I, I'm pretty sure it was, I'm gonna look it up now because now I'm questioning, but I'm.
That just sounds like, well, I would, I was guessing you were gonna say two or three hundred thousand, I.
Which even that is.
Million is like, I mean, which is terrible, but. Oh, my goodness.
That's crazy.
I sat in that airport a week ago and I just was like, shut up Tiffany.
All right.
Oh, my gosh, right? Oh, that was good. I can say it. That was good. Yeah. I remember her from, when she, well, I mean, I know she's still doing that.
See what's the story say?
Yeah.
Oh, maybe, maybe I, maybe I moved my decimal point over a spot. Oh, no, that's what cost the city. The runoff election cost the city eighty grand for the mayoral race, but where's the spending?
I mean, it was crazy and I think it did, it broke records.
Yeah, I seem to recall that Cedar Falls also spent quite a bit. Early as Waterloo.
Okay. Just gonna look it up.
It's a pleasure.
Oh, sorry.
Cancel all my Monday meetings now.
I haven't done that.
Well, I might have, this might drastically change my plans, so my brother-in-law is being promoted to a full bird colonel at Fort Knox.
Oh, wow.
On Friday.
That's a big, that's a big deal.
But I wasn't gonna be able to go because I had the all-day thing on Saturday.
Yeah.
So I might just cancel my classes on Thursday, cause I was really bummed too, I was like, oh, this council.
That's amazing. Yeah.
And there's a bourbon tour somewhere in this, so.
Oh.
And the truth shall set you free too.
So, you know, I didn't wanna, I mean, obviously I, that's not something I would've asked for a change for, but I'm not upset that that worked out. Senator Chuck, Chuck Grassley hospitalized for infection in good spirits. Which is maybe not the best choice of words.
Not great grammar.
I mean, that's.
Where is that? Reaction in his good spirits? Does he have to? I just, I love seeing random Twitter things where people are like, just for you. Okay. I just little random things like here's. Okay. There's your daily poll, man.
So it looks like as of, and this isn't the final, this is like October of twenty-one, which I think, is that the last mayoral race in Cedar Rapids? Yeah, it must've been. Maybe up in twenty-five then, uh, let's see, in October, the total, uh, was three hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars.
How much, I'm sorry, three hundred thousand?
Three hundred and, well.
That's only through October.
Oh, wait a second, no, wait a second, I'm sorry, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, so, so four hundred thousand.
Oh. That's nuts.
Um, up through October, so there would've been more after that.
That's disgusting.
And that's, and, and they're only twice our size. I mean, proportionally.
That's nuts.
I think that's how they ended up with the mayor they got.
Also, I think the Iowa ethics board is very confused because they said I don't have to file a DR two by January nineteenth. Cause I filed one for the primary. I'm like, I am keeping this email, okay, thank you.
Yeah, cause I think.
You're all up to date. I kind of reminded that I'm supposed to.
Yeah, I was like, just call Tim, is it Tim Ahni, is he the guy?
Oh, yeah, no, it was, I talked to Tim.
Nice guy.
He's like, don't worry about it?
I know. Correct.
Huh.
I literally, literally just said, I'm keeping this email because I know I didn't file it.
I. Yeah, as I say, I filed, I filed, so.
Well, it's the sixteenth, so.
Fascinating.
I know, it was very disconcerting, like, no one knows how anything works. It's, I mean, you know, it's just Tim, just Tim, like, oh, you're good.
Is it just, is it just the guy with the laptop?
My super cynical, super cynical idea, and I was like, this is something Sean might say or think, super cynical.
Wow, that's cynical, holy crap.
Yeah, that's, that's cynical.
Get therapy.
Was like, with, with the, all the school district elections, you know, we're just gonna kinda let some things go so we don't look too closely at, um, this cycle.
Interesting.
That popped into my head.
Interesting.
I don't think that's real.
I mean, I think it's one of those, you know, I've heard somebody say, and sometimes I think this is a cop-out, but, you know, think incompetence perform malevolence?
Yeah, no, I think that's true.
Um, I think it's true sometimes.
Usually the simpler, simpler answer.
Yeah, it's, that's, I don't think that's always the case, but, but, just discovered something and I'm waiting, we're hailing to hear back, but as, as Jody was doing all the FAFSA and CSS stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
She discovered, like, we were going and looking at our five twenty-nine plan, which, you know, we've been putting these into the kids since they were little. Now we have a new treasurer and all of a sudden she goes in and like, doesn't even recognize like her email address or anything. So, so she's like, I can't find this, like, any other time, like she, she will check this periodically, right?
Right.
But we, you know, we're, we're both kinda doing that thing like, huh, well, there's a new treasurer and so they probably changed some silly ass thing and. Incompetence.
They're probably just streamlined.
Yes, probably just streamlined and stuff, well.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we've got some questions out. But you know, that's not exactly, that's not good news, right?
No, no. I wanna go check the, my five twenty-nine.
I mean, we've got all the records, yeah, right, that I just hear ya?
Yep. I feel like Nick said something the other day that was like, well, we do have a new treasurer and I'm like, uh, what, what might that be?
Paranoid, that's true. Well, I guess now all the focus has switched to New Hampshire and they can have it.
Wayne's very frustrated reaction. Any of those commercials anymore that was.
For a while anyway, yeah, no, no, totally.
Their sounds and, yeah. Until after Super Tuesday or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, and we, it's kind of a house where we get, it's not awful, but I bet it will become awful because he's registered as an independent.
Oh, yeah, so you get some full sex.
Uh-huh, uh-huh. So, I mean, he's voted that way in quite some time, but he's like, I don't want, he's like, I want to retain that.
Sure, sure, that's, I get it.
Yeah. But.
Very important.
I'm sure you don't know how much robocalling we're getting.
Yeah. That's why I was wanting to turn back when I was a journalist because we're supposed to be partisan.
I can access my five twenty-nine. There is, that's, there is. There is. It seems to be about the amount I expect. Right, good news, bad news, I can get in, but they tap it, right, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, here's the. How fun is it that you do exact copy?
It's just like, I'm really, it's not, I think, and then they. Yeah, and, but, um. What?
Yeah.
But, yeah, well.
I think that they just didn't, I think they're not.
I think they did too, yeah, so I'm like, this is like, wow, this is how frustrating it is to change a meeting, you know, we're like, I'm like, well.
And.
So, yeah, I don't, I wanna engage with it, but absolutely.
This is not.
Engagement is different.
Again, it's not, not everything is gonna be like this. But this is increasingly, um, people.
Yeah, it's.
If it, if it, if it actually happens, it's a very good, you know, that thing.
Yeah. Yeah, cut and paste stuff.
I mean. Um. We're not.
Yeah.
Everybody. Very much, right? This is everything. That would be. Sure. And I mean, and you know, one thing.
Totally, it's a mechanism to get things done, but it's certain. Like, kind of make friends and like come to creative solutions and like create good compromises. It's, it probably was good for me to die in a deep end here, alright, so.
That's a bad, I mean, that's a good.
This is not works. Yeah, we should. It would be easier.
People's job. Should you be. Yeah.
That's.
He too.
Aggressive about advocating, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's just.
Yeah.
The president of there.
Right.
The representative, so.
But I've talked to him, I sat down with him at coffee before, so like, I, I feel like when he talks, I'm like, okay, you're.
Yeah.
You're hired to do this, but I also don't, but I need to just talk to him more about that.
There's like, I mean, when I speak to.
But this is a.
And if it's once, this is. You know, I mean, this is a big game, it's a job and it's.
Oh, it's completely.
Too, like, we need more, this is absolutely.
Just start to watch. Um, it's tough when they do a really good job.
Yeah.
I don't want them to ever do less. Like, they do a great job, and you have good insurance, right, and good success, and but it's a tactic that probably. Pretty figure out.
And so, and I mean, I'm not saying I'm not doing it. So if we raise it to the. What people have been, you know, people are trying to talk. That's, that was their base.
Yeah.
That's, and, and, and. I mean, we actually wouldn't have a good, pretty, other, but.
They.
For, for some. No, I don't think that it's a, we don't have that.
They still.
That they don't have that rating, so I'm like, what are they, what are they?
I'm okay with it.
I mean, she says, this, this is, uh, we do have a situation, and so they have to be at the station.
Right, and nobody's talking, nobody's getting involved, they're just like, they're just not doing it. That would be cool, like, this is.
Oh, and.
Close for long, so I.
So I'm like, open up that, but.
Needs to.
But, you know, I'm willing.
I mean, I stare at it, and I'm just like, oh, dripping from a fire hose.
Yeah, it is, but, okay, I mean. Realizing.
Yeah. Yeah, it's interesting.
You know, it's not. To have full blast or.
Other shop. And.
I want to. Come and be quick as a blanket. They were in, oh, I know, and you want to do that.
And sadly now, it's like.
More like the power.
That's, you know.
I mean, it's, it's like, how does it power, like, once you get on the house, and then. Well, as much as they, yeah, I know, they're there. Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah. Come along, you know, I'm a little. You know, I think you think you might be able to see them there a little bit, but. To, to. To.
Yeah.
I agree, stuff is getting worse, but. As you get bigger, it's different types of firefighting and.
Recording in progress.
Well, um. I wish they was. Do you have a Snuggie? We should all get Snuggie, I would say Snuggies. We could get matching Snuggies for city council, you know, creepy that would be, the public comes in and we're all wearing matching.
It might be people stop, will. Some people stop coming to council a lot.
They would take us less.
Why not, it's time to see, we can do stuff like that.
We could.
So, yeah. It'd be alright.
I didn't have a reason to voice. Yeah, hello, I know, I got a cat today.
Good thing.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working it.
Oh, thank you, with the birds. Pff. Still learning to play the piano, so. Have to start doing that too. Yeah, she's really. I didn't call it, it was all. She will. Should we still send you our orders for food?
Um, yeah.
Okay. I should do that before I forget.
I know. I mean, then I, I think like, like.
Oh, no, so you have burned and all, and all. Yeah. Also. That feeling, that feeling, and you know, it just got to me, I'm like, oh. Well, I was gonna say, and I have nothing to do with that, but that scar is so gorgeous with your skin. Thank you. So. So beautiful. Sorry, not city council related, but just.
Not city council.
Oh, yeah.
Good, how you doing?
Good to see you. I had a note from Ryan today, we're gonna pick something up, so I'll respond back tomorrow, and I'm sure we'll figure that out. Yeah, things going off?
Yeah.
Good. Hey, how are you? Ready?
Um.
Here? Yeah?
Yeah, they should. They should, because they're gonna get, they're gonna get billed, and then. They'll get a copy with the bill.
I left one there.
Oh. Hmm. I really don't wanna jinx us, but. I didn't say anything, I didn't say anything, you're taking it, no, no, I am, okay, I am, because I'm cold. And at least if I'm outside, I can bundle up better. Where are my big shoes?
Well, this weekend I was just home freezing, but.
Well, the last.
Went to Jacksonville, Florida for three days, and it was fine, it was family time, it was not a lot of fun. I mean, I, that's not the wrong thing to say.
No, I, I get, I think it's.
It was warmer, and it was family time, it was good, so. I was surprised, we flew home from Charlotte Monday night, and that was the night, first night we got a Monday.
Yep.
And I was sure. Yeah.
It's all get like a.
We're. It landed in the snowbank, and we got on three eighty, and then we parked.
It's nice.
Nice, yeah.
Yeah. City Council Snuggies.
How was the softball tournament they were in?
It wouldn't be weird at all.
And, uh.
We know, it's North, somebody does Snuggie crawl every year for Beavis and Ears, they have branded Snuggies, and there's three to four hundred people.
But they had enough for.
Community Snuggies.
Just travel problems?
For a bar crawl, so, like, City Council Snuggies is not that weird.
Had been out for, probably thirty hours.
Damn, isn't that bizarre? It's, it just, it reminds me of.
Yeah, we leave them much cramped in the ones they gave.
College. It's the whole town.
That's fantastic.
It is, and I'm like, those are one thing where, like, public money, huh?
Well, it wasn't, but it was perfect.
They get sponsors, they get sponsors from.
Eight below or twenty below?
But it's city staff who do it.
It was perfect.
Next department, but doesn't. Whenever he complains about not being able to be creative, I'm like, really?
No, it's only me. Yeah, we got it.
Do they get, like, uh, badges for every year? No, you get a new Snuggie every year.
You get a new Snuggie every year?
They're different colors every year. I know, people have like a whole collection, I don't think it's good for the.
Hope you're feeling all better.
Yep. Mm hmm. I went once, that was much more than enough. I can't really imagine.
I'll happily get you a response on the email.
Uh, yeah, no, exactly, yeah.
All this money, you'll learn, all this money.
Oh.
I know, I, 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 when you get deep into insider baseball, I feel like I.
Either in Christmas store, in, you know, in his, in the bunny suit, that, oh, go put it on, I just saw you.
Yeah, I, I. I need help, I need your help.
Yeah, and it may be.
There's photos where I like.
When it gets that specific, so.
I think it may be that I need to do a deeper dive with you, that I could run it. Yeah, I'll get you enough to get started.
Humans who I knew.
My side of the freedom.
Yeah.
I hope that is okay with you.
No, I, you know, shifting to a weekday generally is gonna be fine.
I, I'm. I think I could. Figure it out mode right now for myself.
Yeah. Yeah, you guys probably have.
I think it should be.
You know.
Yeah, I've been.
I think he's, I think he'd be a couple.
No, no, I think it should be good.
But, but, no, it's, hey, it's gonna be good, too, I mean, you're already.
There's something should happen, and I would have to.
And then. I'm crawling on top of it. Hmm. Yeah. But is this just like, whatever. Watch your step.
Is this late handout?
No, no, it's like office meeting always. Like, that, just like that of reason.
That's great.
Yeah, maybe they just get to me after you.
Oh, maybe so.
You don't have it on.
No.
Oh, don't have it, maybe. Yeah. I look convinced, you got, you got something like this, wonderful.
I did.
Yeah, that's just for us.
I guess, like, for if you don't wanna read the Iowa code online, you now have it, like, in your possession, so.
Yeah, it's okay. Okay, that's good.
You get that too, that.
Yeah.
You get one every time. Did you get one last time?
Yes.
You just like frame them and stick them on your wall?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, yeah, it's kinda nice, I wasn't expecting that.
It looked nice, it looked nice, right?
Hey, so the, the card, I got one of those today, that is, that's the, does that get to the door on the side?
Yeah.
It's open the door, I never try it, but.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
It didn't, it didn't look.
It doesn't have like thick enough or bar code or anything?
Yeah, it didn't.
Get you through.
It didn't look big enough, so I was.
Test it out, and if you have trouble, let me know.
Okay.
And you can get these lanyards from city clerk.
Okay.
Where are you, we go with this, I never used it before.
Oh, well, so like, if you were to come in, uh, after hours, you can get to.
Yay. Okay, so there's, okay, okay, thank you for that.
Back to city manager's office. And then the outside.
If it's money, I owe anything, that's.
That's not the only story.
Better not, because otherwise our, uh, our controls are failing. But we can track, we, we'll track you too, so.
It's beautiful.
Yeah.
We know when you use it and what door, and how often.
Oh. Well, that's not good. Heart fell off of the ice.
Yeah, that'll get you there too.
I've never been to the.
Two injured, yeah. On the S curve of the I three eighty in the downtown. I know. Yikes. One of forty nine years, one of two on Monday alone. Two of those crashes, this is.
We'll be starting in less than one minute.
Hmm.
Yeah, and I could use a vacuum. Food, food stuff from somebody else, and it. It took ours out. Dude, I need the. I feel, I feel that.
Okay.
It is now six P M on January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, and before I get started, I wanna make sure that Counselor Dunn is on.
I'm good to go.
Awesome, and we can hear you perfectly, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alter, here. Fergus, here. Dunn.
Yes, here.
Harmson.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Saleh.
Yeah.
Teague.
Here, motion passes, uh, uh, no motion at all. It is a, it's a fun, yeah, it's a fun day, it, it is, yes.
Yeah.
Well, welcome to everyone that is president, council chambers, and, uh, virtually attending, uh, in this moment. We're gonna move on to item number two, which is proclamations, we have to a human trafficking prevention and awareness month. And it reads, whereas human trafficking is the use of force, fraud, or coercion to compel a person into commercial sexual acts or labor services against their will. Exploitation of a minor for commercial sex is human trafficking, regardless of whether force, fraud, or coercion was used. And whereas one of the world's fastest growing crimes is the buying and selling of people whose growth has been accelerated in recent years. Communities in rural Iowa are seeing a significant increase in the number of children victimized by labor trafficking. And whereas there is a large disparity between the number of persons victimized by this horrific crime and the number of persons prosecuted as offenders, with more than six hundred and sixty one victims receiving services in Iowa's direct service programs in twenty twenty two, and only three individuals being convicted in Iowa's federal courts for human trafficking and four in Iowa State's appellate courts. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by working to protect the vulnerable within their sphere of influence. And whereas the city of Iowa City joins chains interrupted in the, in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotion of services to survivors of human trafficking, and collaboration with law enforcement. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of January to be human trafficking prevention and. to be Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month in Iowa City and encourage all our citizens to become more informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking and all its forms in our community. For assistance with this, reach out to Chains Interrupted at three one nine, three six four, zero two, two, two. If you see something that doesn't look right, reach out to the National Human Trafficking Hotline at eight eight eight, three seven three, seven eight, eight eight. And to receive this proclamation, we have Teresa Davidson, who is the C E O and co-founder of Chains Interrupting Accepting It.
Well, thank you to everyone who came out in this bitter cold. I'm always wondering why National Human Trafficking Awareness Month has to be in January. But thank you sincerely, Mayor Teague, and all of the city council members. Thank you for the important work that you do for our community. Thank you for caring about this issue that destroys the physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual health of those victimized. Human trafficking can happen to anyone. Every single person in this room fits the profile of a victim, a buyer, and a trafficker. However, traffickers do tend to target those with certain vulnerabilities, especially those who are young. They target desperation, which many of the youth in our community feel right now, whether they are facing abuse at home, bullying at school, blackmail for a photo or video they sent, economic hardships, or just feeling desperate to be a part of something bigger than themselves and are promised an adventure that turns into something that they weren't expecting. As a community, we need to be aware of all parts of this heinous crime. Parents, guardians, teachers, coaches, mentors, and more all need to be aware of how to prevent children from falling victim to this and signs to watch for if they do. Those on the front lines need to be aware of the signs their clients may exhibit when involved in trafficking. It's gonna take multiple systems in our community working together to prevent this, free someone trapped in this, and support those who experience human trafficking to restore their lives. We have some work to do. January has been declared Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month for Iowa City. Please reach out to us for education for your group, business, organization, church, hospital, school, and more. We thank those of you who have already taken this important step. Together, we can take even more steps. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we are going to move on to our consent agenda. Um, and can I get a, I know that, um, during our work session, um, our, uh, city attorney talked about separate consideration for six A and six B.
Best correct, Your Honor, uh, Mr. Mayor. Got to remember which forum I'm in.
Yes.
Um, the Public Works has asked that we defer indefinitely, uh, six A and six B. As there's still a little bit of work yet to be done, and certainly the weather conditions have made it difficult to complete some of the punch list items on those two projects. So I'd ask that those be considered separately and that a motion be made to defer indefinitely, uh, those two items.
Great. Can I get a motion to approve, uh, consent agenda items three through six while we're moving six A and six B for a separate consideration?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second, Sally.
Moved by Harmsen, seconded by Dunn. I heard him. All right, and then anyone from the public like to address any item that is on our consent agenda with the exception of six A and six B? If you are in person, uh, please step to the podium. If you are online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one in person or online, uh, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number, uh, uh, motion, can I get a motion to defer items six A and six B indefinitely?
So moved, Mo.
Sally, so, second, Sally.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number seven, which is our, uh, community comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to talk about anything that is not on our agenda. Um, and if you are in person, please, um, step to the podium, and there is a sign-in sheet where you can write your name. Um, and if you are online, please raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you. Welcome. You'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kate. I'm from Iowa City. Um, the proposed city budget has just come out, and with the budget work session on Saturday, I wanted to discuss the police budget for F Y twenty-five. It's up another two point eight percent from the proposed F Y twenty-four budget. More than that, the F Y twenty-four revised budget is over half a million more than what was proposed. Police spent over half a million extra dollars on top of the egregious one point six million dollar increase from F Y twenty-three. Why is that? Why is the council allowed to vote retroactively to approve money that's already been spent? Subsequently, last year in April, um, to quote city manager Jeff Brune, um, he pointed out that the police department has ended each one of these years under budget and has not required any supplemental funding. But according to the proposed budget this year, that did not occur. Um, F Y twenty-four has a revised budget accounting for expenditures that exceed the proposed budget, and this could happen again in F Y twenty-five. Your constituents are telling you that we do not want that. In twenty nineteen, custodial arrests made up only forty percent of total arrests, thirty-seven percent in twenty twenty, and it skyrocketed to seventy-four percent in twenty twenty-one and seventy-six percent in twenty twenty-two. Why is there such a sudden increase in the proportion of arrestees taken into custody, especially since most types of violent crime are trending down, according to the I C P D annual report? How are your crime statistics gathered? Are the crimes listed the charges initially entered, or are they the charges someone is actually convicted of? Furthermore, the F Y twenty-six projected budget is around eighteen point five million, yet the strategic plan wants less police response by fiscal year twenty-eight. If our city's overall goal is to decrease the amount of police responses in our community, why are we projecting that we will be investing more money into our police department? Investing more money into the police seems to go against the city's strategic plan that they pride themselves on. I'm here today, supported by a group of comrades, to ask the City of Iowa City, why? Why does this extra money go towards? What does this extra money go towards? The largest place that the police budget is spent on is patrol. We do not want more patrol. Police patrol does not make our community safer. Why are we not investing in the strategies laid out in the city's strategic plan for safety and well-being? If we're following the strategies set forth, we would invest in alternative models of public safety, partnerships with nonprofits, fostering connections, and developing safe and accessible public areas. It's my understanding that the council does not have all the power when it comes to certain aspects of the budget, but where you do hold power is the general fund, which is where the police budget comes from. You have the power to create material change in your community that's in alignment with the vision of your constituents and the city's strategic plan, but you must act now. Increasing the police budget will only further endanger the most vulnerable in our community. We call upon you to end the cycle of upholding violent systems. When you put more money into the police under the guise of public safety, you ignore all of the real and tangible avenues that lead to safety and instead create a more hostile and militarized environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our, on our agenda? Seeing no one in person or online. We're gonna move on to items eight, which is planning and zoning matters. Eight A is rezoning twelve oh one West Benton Street, and Counselor Mo will be recruiting himself from this item. An ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately seventy, um, point seven eight acres of land located at twelve oh one West Benton Street from low-density residential to low-density multi-family residential. The applicant is requesting expedited action. Um. Yeah, I think it's. Yeah, is requesting expedited action.
Who's? I have a, I can.
Okay.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Not yet, I know.
Not right now?
Yeah, no, no, go right ahead. Go right ahead. Yeah.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the first consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be given second consideration and vote at this time.
Moved by.
Alter.
Alter.
Second.
Seconded by Saleh. Um, anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. If you're in person, please step to the podium. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. I think it's gonna be great. Roll call, please.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
Six to zero for, uh, record, Your Mayor.
Oh, correct. Six to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
Move.
Second.
All right, moved by Saleh, seconded by Harmsen. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Burgess.
Second, Alter.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, we're gonna move on to item number eight B, which is zoning code amendment. Reduction of maximum allowable height in the R N S twelve zone. Counselor Mo is recruiting himself from this item as well. Uh, this is an ordinance amending Title fourteen zoning to reduce the maximum allowable height in the neighborhood stabilization residential zone from thirty-five feet to twenty-seven feet for single-family and duplex uses. And this is, um, our motion to pass and adopt. Could I get a, uh, motion, please?
Move.
Second, Alter.
Moved by, uh, Saleh, seconded by Alter. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you. If you're in person, please step to the podium. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
No. Motion passes five to one. Eight C, uh, comprehensive plan amendment. Resolution to amend the comprehensive plan future land use map for property located north of I eighty and west of North Dodge Street at the end of Moss Ridge Road from Office Research Development Center to intensive commercial. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Alter.
Second, Burgess.
All right, and welcome, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As you said, this is an, a comprehensive plan amendment. There will be a separate rezoning, uh, uh, case after this with the C Z A that we have received, so. Um, the owner and applicant in this case is Stephen Moss. They are interested in selling approximately sixty-one acres of property located north of Interstate eighty and west of Highway one, North Dodge Street. The applicant submitted, like I said, two applications to allow future commercial uses here. A T I Group is interested in developing the property for transportation and warehousing facilities. The owner plans to accomplish this through a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future use, uh, map designation in the comprehensive plan from Office Research Development Center to intensive commercial and to also, like I say, uh, accomplish a zoning map amendment. The comprehensive plan amendment must be approved for changes to the zoning map to be consistent with comprehensive plan. That's why this one is coming first. Um, the subject properties are in the north corridor planning district, but there is no district plan, uh, for this area. One has not yet been developed. Um, shown on the map is the location of the subject property. As I mentioned, it's north of I eighty and west of, uh, North Dodge Street. Uh, in between it and North Dodge Street is the former Pearson, uh, building shown there, and the rest of the area is largely undeveloped. Um, there is a street, uh, connection to this property, Moss Ridge Road, which the city did develop ourselves in twenty fifteen, and the city does own some of the property that is undeveloped to the northeast of the subject property. This shows the current comprehensive plan designation, future land use map designation. Uh, northwest corner, top left corner in blue is a subject area. The comprehensive plan serves as a land use, uh, planning guide, policy guide, and illustrates the configuration and location of appropriate land uses in this map. Um, the subject properties were long ago identified as appropriate for office and research park style development. Um, they have great access to I eighty interchange, North Dodge Street. And then the city first saw interest in this kind of development as far back as, as the sixties and seventies. Since that time, every time we've updated our comprehensive plan, we've kind of just memorialized what the forces were already at work, uh, in this area and designated it as appropriate for Office Research Development Center. Um, that includes the most recent comprehensive plan update, which was in twenty thirteen, occurring at about the same time there was last interest in development in this area, which was roughly twenty-ten, twenty-fifteen, the last time this area was subject to, uh, rezonings or, or plating. Um, the proposals, like I said, like I said, concurred, right, occurred during the comprehensive plan, uh, process, and so nothing was changed on the map at that time. However, um, nothing actually was ever developed. In twenty-ten, I, as I said, there was a concept proposed. There was rezoning actions and plating in twelve and fifteen. Um, but none of those plans ever came to fruition. Um, so the land is still essentially vacant. Uh, and the currently proposed concept, which would be in that black circle, the purple area, does require a reevaluation of the, um, future land use appropriate in this area. When we do that kind of reevaluation, um, it's a comprehensive plan amendment, and we have criteria and ordinance that we follow in, in conducting that analysis. And applicants are, uh, able to request this kind of amendment as they consider redevelopment. So we'll go through those criteria here quickly. And the first one is whether circumstances have changed or there's additional information since the last time the comp plan was updated. And we certainly feel that's the case here for this property. As I said, the development interest over time has changed. Uh, the uses in this area have changed. Pearson's no longer operating in this area. And we've seen quite a bit of, uh, demand drop for office space, uh, even most recently with the pandemic. Um, there's certainly a clear shift to a different kind of working, working from home, and that the major operators of Office Research Park in this area have also op, uh, accordingly, uh, changed their operations. That includes A C T campus farther south as well as Pearson.
Can I interrupt just for a minute? Just for, like, clarification? I know that the land is for sale, but A C T has not closed its offices.
Okay.
Just, I, I just don't want people to freak out. Like, we're still out there.
Thank you. Um. So let me just back up here a second then. So either, regardless, office demand has clearly changed, and we see that there's certainly a, an overall, because of these trends, a public interest in reviewing the property's future land use, uh, in this circumstance. The second criteria is whether the proposed amendment is compatible with other, uh, policies and provisions of the comprehensive plan. And we feel that it is. It fulfills economic development policies expressed throughout the, the plan itself. Um, trying to build a resilient economy, adjusting to changes in the economy as they come along, um, looking for ways for development to be, uh, continue to be compact and efficient and make use of good resources, uh, as it does so. Um, as I mentioned, there is no district plan for this area. There is a fringe area agreement for, that does control county, uh, land, uh, the county's development policies and the city's interaction nearby. Um, the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and strategies in the comp plan related to building that resilient economy, focusing on creating commercial nodes, um, to efficiently use resources like highways while protecting valuable features such as open space, farmland, and residential neighborhoods. This, uh, development would allow, um, uh, would align with the expressed, um, desire for this particular area that was included in the comprehensive plan, like I said, in twenty thirteen, supporting redevelopment here in some, uh, in some form. So this is the next steps where we're at. Like I said, there are two applications. The first one we're considering is the one highlighted in orange. Following that would be the rezoning. Um, this property actually has conditions, uh, included in the rezoning that would require it to also go through a plating process. And then with all commercial development, there would be site plan and building permits as well. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval of the amendment. And at its December twentieth meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and recommended approval of the comp plan amendment by a vote of six to zero. Um, applicant did not choose to, to use a good neighbor policy in this case, but staff has also not received any public comments regarding the proposed amendment. We do still do our public notice and hearing that we're required to do, regardless of whether a good neighbor meeting is held. Tonight, I do know representatives are in the audience. If you have questions, um, you can certainly call them to answer them. I believe they may also be on Zoom, so keep an eye out for a hand raised there. That concludes my presentation on the comp plan.
Any questions for Danielle?
I do have one. Really, the question should be about whether it's proper to bring up right now or during the proposed zoning amendment. Which would be a better time to have a conversation about the sensitive areas on the property?
I will say my presentation on the rezoning touches on the sensitive areas that are in this, on this property. It does really just end up being a matter that would be a future review. So I don't know if you have specific questions about the sensitive areas ordinances apply to this property, but I would guess rezoning is probably more appropriate to talk about it.
I would agree, Counselor Dunn. I think the next item is probably the best forum for your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Is it accurate to say that regardless of what the comprehensive plan says about this space, sensitive areas would still need to be reviewed?
Yes, those are part of the zoning code in our regulatory feature.
Yeah. I think it's very appropriate to talk about this as we, in our work session, talked about amending the comprehensive plan. We have something in our comprehensive plan that is not maybe what we need a whole lot more of in the future. So this is a good case study for us.
All right, thank you. And I'm assuming none of the development team want to say anything at this point, just available for questions? Okay, welcome.
I'll sign in a minute. I'm Michael Mullenbrook with McClure. Tyler Leo with ATI is also on the call. We know this is the first time this application has been in front of you, and we're here for questions if you have them. I just want to say that city staff has been great to work through this with. It's been an interesting property over time, and it's exciting to be moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one in public or in person, council discussion.
I would just say that I appreciate the work that's gone into this application, as well as the staff explanation that we got here before us. I really don't have any, any problem with anything that we're, we're looking at. I think it makes a lot of sense with the, with the changed market conditions that we have all been able to see almost certainly in our own lives.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item eight D, rezoning Moss Ridge Road. Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 61.72 acres of land located north of I-80, west of North Dodge Street at the end of Moss Ridge Road from research development park zone, interim development research park zone, and highway commercial with a planned development overlay zone to intensive commercial zone. And I'm gonna open the public hearing, and welcome Danielle again.
Thank you, Mayor. As I said, this is the second two applications. This is the rezoning for the same subject property for the same purposes. The proposed rezoning is aimed at development of an intensive commercial use, which aligns with the current changes and trends that we mentioned, I mentioned we are seeing today. Furthermore, this location is near other warehousing uses and has few neighbors. It's appropriate for considering a more intensive land use. The property has three existing zoning districts applied to it, shown here in this exhibit, including an overlay zone, so that O, that O district that you just saw in the introduction there, and has a variety of conditions applied to it through the previous rezoning process, through a conditional zoning agreement. It was based on a previous development concept and a master plan approved, like I said, in the 2010, 2015 timeframe. No development ever occurred, other than the city to build a street network to connect to this property. So really, at this point, those conditions are no longer relevant and are not being proposed to be carried forward. The conditions that are included in this rezoning case at the end are relevant to the proposal of the concept as far as we know it, and I'll go through those as we get to them in the presentation. So the proposed rezoning is to an intensive commercial CI-1 zone. It's the least intense, intense commercial zone, or it's also not an industrial zone, that allows the type of use contemplated by the current developer. Staff worked with the development team to identify that zone for them to request, to make sure that it was what they needed for the concept that they had in mind, but not any more intense or expansive than what we thought was appropriate and identified in the comprehensive plan amendment change that you just approved. It does require, because it's a commercial zone, site, a commercial site development standards to be reviewed and approved. We think that's a good thing. The commercial site development standards are more stringent, more expansive than those for industrial. Industrial tends not to be as design-focused versus commercial, which is, and we think that's important for this site. If you're interested in what other uses would be allowed, that was included in the staff report. There are a variety of other uses besides what the applicants considering. I will say that even though there's quite a few of them, they all do still have provisions usually attached to them. So while it is opening the door to commercial, our code does have backstops built into it for things that would be impactful, and we do go through additional reviews for standards for anything happening outside. So the outdoor display, there's landscaping and screening requirements built into our code to address those. This is the concept so far that they've developed, and they really don't have to have a concept at this point. They are not requesting an overlay zone, so no O-PD as part of their rezoning. They do not need to request that O rezoning because they're not impacting sensitive areas. If they were proposing impacts to sensitive areas, that would have triggered an O-PD rezoning. The previous rezoning conditions, as I mentioned, are no longer really relevant. They were focused on creating a cohesive design as part of that master planned office park that did need an O-PD rezoning to have certain waivers for base standards. They're not requesting that as part of their proposal or the rezoning. And as I mentioned, future development would also need to be reviewed to the criteria applicable to commercial site development standards. And the commercial site development standards ensure, like I said, that commercial development is compatible in scale and intensity to surrounding development. It does have standards for screening of outdoor elements visible to the public. It also ensures safe pedestrian and vehicle circulation. The criteria that we use for a rezoning review are fairly basic. We look at the consistency with the comprehensive plan and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. Consistency with the comprehensive plan was ensured through the last action that you just took, the comprehensive plan amendment. The comprehensive plan background acknowledges that the city has taken steps to direct employment growth into this area and has made investments ourselves here. And we specifically see the Moss Ridge location as a beneficial place for businesses that require close access to Interstate 80. Regarding compatibility with the existing neighborhood, this particular property is bordered by agricultural, where, other warehousing and office, the interstate, as well as light industrial and indoor recreation and some city-owned property as well. The commercial site development standards serve as a way to manage future commercial development here, as I mentioned. Staff does find the property would have minimal impact on the existing neighborhood character due to the majority of the land to the west of this and north being undeveloped. There is still developable land to the west of this particular property before it is abutting to any residential areas. As I mentioned, because they're not impacting sensitive areas, there's no sensitive areas plan included with the rezoning, as there would be typically. We can address sensitive areas. We do review sensitive areas in a couple different ways, different steps of development. One of those steps could be at site plan. If a commercial site plan were to come in, we would simply look at the sensitive area on that site. Staff is actually proposing a condition that would require a prelim and final plat. That's a stage earlier in the development process with a more holistic approach to sensitive areas. We think that's a better way to actually make sure that the sensitive areas throughout the entire property are addressed earlier in the process, rather than waiting on a site-by-site analysis. So that condition is included in the recommended conditions here, that they do a preliminary plat. Another element of previous development here was the filing of a traffic study in 2012. That was based on that former master plan, which is no longer the development concept. And so we do also want to see an update to that traffic study before we would get into the approval of specific development. So that is also included as a condition on this rezoning. So as I mentioned, second of two applications, where this is the rezoning stage, including those three conditions. The third condition having to do with water main design and extension of a water main. So based on the review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval with those conditions. At their December 20th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred and also voted six to zero for the rezoning to proceed with those conditions. We have, as I said, received the conditional zoning agreement signed tonight. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer questions.
I guess just go, start with my question about the sensitive areas. I noticed the staff report mentioned there was a certain section of it that would excuse me, that could potentially be considered for the National Registry of Historic Places. Would you be able to go into some detail on that, as well as, you know, what section of the property it is, and also any archaeological aspects of the property?
So that is in reference to archaeological resources, anything having to do with historic is in regard to archaeological sites. I don't have that city in front of me. We tend not to actually divulge that information because it can lead to those resources being prematurely removed by people who trespass. So what we do is we require those resources to be studied and catalogued by the Office of the State Archaeologists, and then they determine whether they should be removed or mitigated or left in place. So I don't have that information with me tonight, but if you're interested in it, Counselor Dunn, we can provide it to you.
But we've been assured that those, those sites will not be affected by this development.
Right. They're, they're regulated through our sensitive areas ordinance, and they're required to contract with a qualified third party to study those. It ends up tending to be the Office of the State Archaeologists.
Okay.
Any other questions for Danielle?
I'm pretty sure that I'm putting, as is my theme for the night, putting the cart before the horse a little bit. But can you go to the, the visual of what the proposed, just the?
Yeah. This is just a rough concept.
Exactly. Totally understand that.
Yep.
I'm interested in that in relation to the traffic study, because it looks like there's only that one road, Moss Road.
Right.
Moss Ridge Road, sorry, that then empties out onto Dodge. Is that correct?
Right.
So would part of the traffic study be only looking at existing, the existing traffic study, or patterns?
Right. The purpose of a traffic study is to determine whether there are offsite improvements that need to be made to some other part of the road network to ensure that it functions. The 2012 traffic study actually probably was looking at more intense traffic uses because of the nature of the mix of commercial and support services versus what may ultimately end up being here, which is more of logistics use with very little office or very little customers coming to the site.
Right.
So the scope of the traffic study would certainly extend beyond the site. It would look at the entire street network and whatever road design they end up proposing, the connections and the potential generation of traffic onsite and how that traffic would disperse into the rest of the network.
Okay.
So until they identify those uses or a more concrete street network, we really can't say for sure.
No, but even that explanation helps contextualize it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand, your virtual hand. And if you're in person, please step to the podium. Seeing no one in person or online. Before I close the public hearing, I just wanted to see with my fellow counselors if you're inclined to vote with P and Z.
Yes.
All right, we have a major, nodding of some heads. All right, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to get first consideration?
Move. Saleh.
Second. Mo.
Council discussion.
I think it's an interesting way to kind of have a new lease on life for this area that kind of had one direction essentially go stagnant, and then with the way that everybody is doing business this time, I'm excited that there's a possibility for it moving forward.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Motion passes seven to zero. We're on to our regular formal agenda, and we'll start with 9A, 2023 Sanitary Sewer Repairs. Resolution to approve in project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the 2023 Sanitary Sewer Repairs Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and welcome Joe.
Joe Elter from Engineering. So this is one of several projects that we do on a annual basis to continually repair and fix our sanitary sewer system. And this particular project focuses this year on 10 different locations. The locations are often spread around town, so we have a little bit of a concentration in kind of the east, southeast side of town, but also heading towards downtown a little bit with the Washington Street repair. In this project this year, we're going to be mainly focusing on some manholes. We'll be installing a new manhole. That's on the Highland location. There are several manholes that are damaged that are gonna be repaired. Several lamp holes, which are just basically a way to look down into the sewer, but not really access it very well. We're gonna be replacing those with actual manholes so that we can get our equipment and personnel down in, in the sewers if need be. We do have a couple of locations where we're removing and replacing damaged pipes. Of course, we restore any private sanitary sewer services that are encountered. And when we're all done, we'll be replacing pavement and our grassed areas. $313,000 is our cost, estimated cost for this. We look to award open bids next month and award bids. The projects start in April, and we're planning on completing that at the end of September, which is the end of the seeding, seeding deadline. Stanley Consultants designed this project, and again, it's part of our regular maintenance and repair of this system every year. Any questions?
Joe, how do you determine the locations for these repairs?
Yeah, so our sewer collections crew goes around with their camera on a regular basis, televising, videotaping the sewers, and very interesting videos, captivating videos. But, but we find different areas of town. It's like, this is something that we really need to address soon. This is something that can wait, and so we make a priority list. We have roughly a budget of $500,000 a year. And so we also have to think about, well, we have some repairs to make. We also, on the same CIP, we often line sewer pipes and manholes. So the pipes are gonna stay in place, manholes are gonna stay in place, the sewer is gonna stay active, but we're gonna line them. And then we've also been in recent years using that same CIP to abandon some pipes that are gonna stay in place. We're not gonna dig them up and, and remove them, but we wanna fill them so that they don't cause issues in the future. So we kind of have to weigh, well, what are we, what are we gonna do in each of those different areas? And so as we go along, we decide, okay, this is, this is becoming more of a priority, or this, this needs to move up, and this moves, needs to move back, and those kind of things, so.
Great, thank you.
Sewer backups, does, does that also configure into the locations?
Sewer backups in the main or in services?
I would say in the main.
Are very rare. Most of the time, if we're getting a sewer backup in the main, it's usually because there has been a pipe failure in some way, or there's a sag. The pipe has sagged in some way. Those tend to be, dig them up, completely replace them. Sometimes they fit into this. This is usually small sections, like we're replacing 10 feet of pipe or 15 foot of pipe. Sometimes what you're talking about, that ends up being more of an emergency situation, or it ends up being something where we have to plan out a whole project that involves, you know, you know, sort of a whole block or a half a block. Those end up tending to be either, we got to do this right now, it's an emergency, or this, we need to sit and think about how to do this, hire a consultant for that and go through a whole process. This tends to be more of, these are small little repairs, we're going to hire one consultant, or one, one consultant, one contractor, get unit prices for all of that so that we, we, instead of dividing this up into 10 small projects, we get some economy of scale by putting them together.
Thank you.
Appreciate the use of technology to make these repairs surgical as opposed to whole replacement of old pipes. And I know this is not what we're looking at today, but I'm curious, is there a long list of these that you guys have a prioritized list coming up?
We don't run out of opportunities. So, yeah, we, we have about a three-year schedule, we, two to three years that we're working on. So we kind of have an A list, a B list, and a C list. So the A list kind of ends up being the most highest priority and then, and then down from there. So often, the B list becomes the A list for the next year, but not, not always. Some things come up, and we don't get around to every pipe, but on about a three-year cycle. So as our crews are televising that, they're finding new things that maybe they didn't see three or four years ago, and so that can move something up or down on the list as well. The access to the repair also significantly impacts what makes this type of project and what might become a bigger C I P. If it's right in the middle of the street, that's, that's great. That's fine. If it's in the back of a property and there's fences and sheds and all kinds of different things in the way, or it's down in a ravine, those kinds of things make it more complicated. Those often don't make it onto this project. They might become a bigger C I P, individual C I P project.
Thanks.
I might be.
Go ahead.
Actually, my question is simply, it was working off from what you were talking about and you were with those, like when it was a main line or something, and I'm assuming that's like, like if there's a water break or something, right? Like we had on court not long ago, right? And simply because we're coming up on budget season, are there two different kind of like for, like money for emergencies for that type of thing, or is it coming out of one big pot? Does that impact then the money that you have for these more planned?
Well, I believe you're talking about a water main break. We're talking about.
Yeah.
Sanitary sewers.
Oh, and you're just sanitary sewer, sorry.
Which is a little bit different, but, but you are correct in the sense that this project is also used for emergencies with sanitary sewer repairs.
Yeah, sorry about my.
That's fine. And, and then the water similarly has, okay, we're going to replace this whole run of pipe because the pipe needs to be replaced versus we have a break, which often we're either making those repairs with our crews or we're hiring a contractor that has one C I P, and then we have a separate C I P that's for like the surface restoration. So a lot of those repairs get made in the wintertime, and we can't put down new concrete or asphalt at that time. And so a lot of those surface restorations are being done on a separate C I P.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Especially for working through where I was getting things conflated. Thanks.
No, that's, that's fine. It's, it's, there's a lot of different places where we're using the same funds to, but different C I P numbers, but it's, it's kind of the same enterprise funds.
Great.
Yeah.
Here are no other questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone, yes, anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online and you want to address this, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Mo.
All right. Counsel discussion.
Glad we have a good sewer system.
Yeah.
All right. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Nine B is 2024 Parking Garages Maintenance and Repair. Resolution, Improving Project Manual and Estimate of Cost for the Construction of the 2024 Parking Garages Maintenance and Repair Project. Establishing Amount of Bid, Security to Accompany Each Bid, Directing City Clerk to Post Notice to Bidders, and Fixing Time and Place for Receipt of Bids. And I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome again, Joe.
Thank you. So this is also an annual repair project, just on our parking garages, and this year we are focusing, we have six different ramps. This year, we're focusing on the Capitol Street ramp, and it's structural work that we're doing this time around. So sometimes these projects will have electrical work or HVAC work or mechanical work. This year, we're really focusing on this one ramp and all structural repairs. So we'll have areas that we're resealing, areas we're filling with epoxy or putting new membrane down. We do have a couple of STEM repairs, which are going to involve a fiberglass reinforced plastic mesh. There's some flashing that needs to be redone, some spalls and some broken concrete that's going to be removed and then replaced. This is also doing some stairwell maintenance in that ramp. The project that's going on right now, the 23 project, is similar types of things on the stairwells at Dubuque Street and Tower Ramp, and so this is going to be very similar to that. The last thing that we get quite often on the type of ramp that Capitol Street is, is the, the plates, the joints are welded together and the weld breaks, and so we got to take the joint out, re-weld the joint together, and then re-put the, the joint back together. So that's often done, and we have to bring in welders to do that. So that's the type of things that we're doing this year on, on the annual maintenance project. The estimated cost is 366,000. I coordinated this, so I'd have the same council night and the same bid opening and the same award night, so I don't know. But all right, same dates there, but the construction is going to start in May. It's a relatively compact schedule, but it's also, the work is, doesn't involve a lot of subs. It's going to be one, one contractor primarily, and so we're hoping to get that done and completed before students come back for the university schedule. So starting in late May, hopefully ending in mid, mid-August. Shive Hattery is our designer on this, and they did, been our designer for several years now and did an excellent job on this. Questions?
How many parking spots get lost during the construction?
We limit it, so generally, it's limited to 60 spots at a time. There are times of the day or days of the week that sometimes parking will say, okay, well, we can, we can go a little bit over that 60 spaces. The parking ramps haven't generally been full since the beginning of the pandemic. The one exception is sometimes Capitol Street gets fairly, fairly full, but sometimes we just have to push people up a little bit further to that fourth or fifth level, which haven't been getting as much parking in recent years. But it doesn't tend to be an issue that we run out of spots. It's more, the issue tends to be that people park in the spots that we've said not to park in, and then we have to move the cars around, and then people are confused where their car went to. So that tends to be more of the issue than the spots that are, that are taken.
Are there any penalties for the contractor to not finish on time?
Yes, there are. There are liquidated damages on this project. The contractors that we've had bid in recent years, and we've had about three different contractors do this type of work, have been excellent to work with, so I don't anticipate issues with that. So, and again, it, we kept this project relatively to a safe, things that they're used to doing regularly. There's not any kind of weird, different things that we're doing on this project, so.
And then last question. This parking garage, I assume, has a lot of life left in it, like the investment is absolutely worth it. There's many, many, many more years of life in this parking garage. Is that true?
We hope so.
Okay, you hope so.
More confidence. We, we just got done, Shive Hattery did a, a new planning document for us, and all of the ramps were, went from fair condition up to excellent condition. So, and a lot of that had to do with the age of the ramp. So Capitol Street and Dubuque Street are our oldest ramps. They have more of a fair condition. Harrison Street is a relatively new ramp, being five, six years old, and it, it got an excellent rating. So as they get used more, as the, where and tear goes on it, the condition of the ramp is going to degrade over time as well. So there isn't any thought that the ramp's going to be out of commission anytime soon. So.
I will use that opportunity to preview your C I P meeting because the annual budget for these repairs is, is going up considerably. We generally looked at that $500,000 range, and I think by the end of the five years, we're trying to get to about 1.5 million, so we do project some larger needs in order to maintain those ratings that Joe's talking, talking about, but we'll get into those details next week.
Yeah, part of that is, part of that planning document that we just did was looking at chloride levels in the, in the pavement, concrete itself, and how much intrusion there is of chlorides, which are coming directly from application of brine and, and salt materials this time of year, and then that penetrating down into the cement, which tends to deteriorate the concrete. And that's one of the things we really wanted to look at. To address your question more in depth is how do we know how well the, the concrete's doing, or how, how well do we know that the penetration of those chlorides isn't getting to the metal inside of the concrete? And that's one of the things that we really wanted to do, so.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. And if you're in person, please step up, seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Burgess.
Counsel discussion.
I just think that as with all of our projects, the more communication and public announcements we can say, including maybe even some, just some signage about like, just keep going up, go up, you know, so that they, people know that they can park, but that they don't, dude, where's my car?
All right. Roll call, please.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number 10, which is our announcements of vacancies previous, 10A. We're going to go with Charter Review Commission, nine vacancies to fill a one-year term, begin in April 1st, 2024, and end in no later than April 1st, 2025. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. Ad hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission, one vacancy to fill an expirer term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, January 30th, 2024. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Port of Appeals, one vacancy for an HVAC or building design professional or a qualified trade representative with experience and training to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an expirer term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an expirer term. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill an expirer term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, and these vacancies will remain open until filled. We're at item number 11, which is City Council Information.
Can I just do a huge thank you to our Parks and Rec and our road crews for just, probably not tirelessly, probably in a very, very tired fashion, but by keeping at it and trying to make sure that people are safe and that the roads are clear and working to get trees out of roads and yards, and so I just heartfelt thank you.
I think piggybacking off of that actually had, had sent a city manager a request for some Storm by the Numbers, to put together some numbers. So if I missed something here, Jeff, if you want to chime in, but I'll hit a few highlights. 250 miles of streets that are, have to be plowed. To do those 250 miles of streets, there are 26 staff in, in the Streets Department that do snow plowing. They have 14 plow dump trucks, 11 end loaders, and a motor grader. I believe they were doing some of 16-hour shifts, two different teams essentially, on 16-hour shifts during the height of our two back-to-back snowstorms. Let's see, some of the things, still calculating the number of hours of overtime plus the, the cost in salt, sand, extra fuel, and extra maintenance. Our other departments, in addition to the wonderful work of our Streets Department, you mentioned Parks and Rec and Forestry, also clears all kinds of trails. They have staff that do that. We have our emergency departments, Fire Department and Iowa City Police Department. Looks like they had 74 different accidents ICPD responded to in this time period, although they don't, this doesn't break down whether or not, how much was weather and how much were injuries. Let's see, it looks like ICPD had 208 calls for motorist pedestrian assists from the morning of the ninth to the morning of the 16th. Says several calls were for officers to give rides to unhoused individuals or bus patrons with no other mode of transportation when the buses were not out. I also heard a little rumor that we had other members of city staff, some who might be in this room, who, when we had to cancel the bus service for safety reasons during the first snowstorm, they happened to have a big old four-wheel-drive pickup truck, Redmond's one of them, who, there were several people who were stranded at the downtown hub and then spent several hours, and Redmond, you probably know, if you want to shout out to anybody else who was doing this, or Jeff knows, just with their personal vehicles, were giving people rides home. So excellent neighborly kind of behavior. Iowa City Fire Department, of course, was also, also helping calls. Sounds like they had 235 different incidents for various things over the, over the time when everybody else was hunkering down inside, and so they were out still doing their jobs. And we'll probably get, I'm sure we'll probably get some more information. So, and certainly the Shelter House busy keeping a number of guests in the emergency shelter and winter shelter, I think ranging from, depending on the day, 130 to over 150 different people who were taking advantage of those services. There was also an effort by Shelter House and with some help from various entities, including the city, to provide, people who were refusing shelter are providing them extra fuel for warmth and things like that. So this was all happening. Again, well, many of us were comfortably safe and warm. And so I just kind of, kind of want to do that, and, and I'll, I'll go ahead and pause, and Jeff or Redmond, what did I forget?
Yeah. Jump right in.
And thank you, thank you, Redmond, for being part of that. That was above and beyond the call, and it is, is appreciated.
I was just going to add that Darian was also using her personal vehicle as, as well as.
Mark.
Mark, yes, thank you. Was also using his personal vehicle to get folks around. So it was, it was very, actually very enjoyable to, to meet folks and, and get them to their homes, so it was a pleasure.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the kind comments, and staff's certainly been working hard, and it's really all, all hands-on. You know, you've got water staff that are taking care of breaks and then maintaining the sidewalks at the, at the different water facilities. Our facilities staff here taking care of the sidewalks around City Hall, also dealing with a roof leak here at City Hall. Jason Havel left, but he no longer has an office here because of the roof leak.
Oh, no.
We had a pipe burst at the rec center. We've got temperature issues at Senior Center and Terry Trueblood, so it's kind of all hands-on deck. The transportation staff is not only driving folks around, but they're clearing curb ramps downtown, clearing the parking decks at the upper levels as well. So it's been exhausting for many, many staff members responding, and then there's a lot of folks behind the scenes that are working hard. Our communications staff are on call pretty much at all times, waiting for those updates and trying to get those out to the, to the community as well. So appreciate counsel's support, and I know the Public Works Crew will be downtown the next two nights hauling all of the snow out and taking it over to our old Public Works campus where it'll probably be there. Works campus, where it'll probably be there until July. And that's certainly a long, exhausting effort, too, as we do that primarily in those midnight to 3:00 AM hours.
I think it's worth pointing out, too, with the extreme cold, a lot of streets are still packed, snow and ice, because it's too cold for the salt to do, be very effective. But I did have, because I work in Cedar Rapids, I did have occasion to drive through Cedar Rapids and North Liberty, sometimes detouring around Block 380, and it's very consistent, like different municipalities all kind of in the same boat, where done the best they could to get it down to pavement, but sometimes that hasn't been possible yet. Hopefully, as we get a few degrees warmer, we'll see some more of that pavement reappearing in our city streets. I would also, as one side note, just to underline kind of what this has been like, so from Iowa City to Cedar Rapids this morning, I counted 67 cars and trucks in the ditch along 80 and 380, just in that, that stretch of highway. So it was, you know, a pretty big reminder of what it's like to live in the Upper Midwest.
Yeah. I'll just echo the thanks to all the city staff, and speak a little bit to my transit experiences the last week or so. So on Tuesday, I believe, was the day that service had to be canceled partway through the day, but I took an early bus in, and I will just say that the, every transit operator has been so cheerful throughout, and staying so close to schedule or on schedule is just phenomenal. And I had, that morning, there was someone who, on the number five bus, who hopped on with his dollar, and the driver just said, no, no, it's free, and the little exchange between them, and the guy being like, oh, I should ride the bus more often. Yes, you should! So, big thanks to our transit operators, keeping that going, even when, I mean, so many days I thought, boy, they're going to have to cancel service, but it was just that one half-day, so well done.
Counselor Dunn, your hand is raised?
Yes, sir, I was having some technical difficulties. I just also, you know, in addition to all of the commendations that we're giving to city staff, and, you know, everyone else who stepped up when, when things got tough, I also want to commend a couple of people in the community, community groups, the Catholic Worker House, that did some major work with, you know, support for Shelter House, serving meals, as well as members of the punk community who showed up and were able to help out distributing, you know, food, fuel, and other necessary resources for survival, again, to a lot of unhoused people during a time of great need and struggle. So just making sure that we, we thank everyone, you know, that we possibly can. There's many more people that also stepped up during this time, but just want to make sure that the people that I know, you know, get the recognition that's deserved.
I wanted to remind fellow counselors that I'll be going to Washington DC tomorrow through Friday, and that's for the US Conference of Mayors, and also for the Mayor's Innovation Project. On Saturday, we are very fortunate that Iowa City is being recognized nationally by some of the climate action innovative projects that we're doing, and so Sarah Gardner, she's going to be going to represent Iowa City on Saturday at the Mayor's Innovation Project, and share what we're doing right here in little old Iowa City. So I'll be very proud of, I'm very proud of the, of this opportunity, and happy that Sarah was able to step in.
Yeah, and while I will be the mayor during that time, so if you have any question, the best time to reach out to me is like phone call, or maybe text message. That I think the best way, because sometimes emails will be delaying a little bit, so you have my phone, and if you don't have it, it's in the website of the City of Iowa City website, so.
Right. Have no other updates? We're going to move on to item number 12, and this is a report from our city staff. We'll start with our city manager's office.
Nothing further tonight, thank you.
Our city attorney?
Briefly, Mr. Mayor, you may recall, I think at our last meeting, that in response to a question Counselor Burgess posed about the Charter Commission, I retorted that lawyers are good for any assignment. It turns out that lawyers are not high on the draft board for Blizzard response. And so we went about our business, of course, as usual, but did not contribute much to the cost.
Our city clerk?
I have nothing.
Okay. Item number 13, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second.
Saleh.
All right, moved by Harmsen, seconded by Saleh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, we are adjourned.